Okay.
All right, here we go. Good morning, everyone. I will call this meeting to order November 10th, 2025, DeKalb County Commissioners. Dottie.
Well, hello. Good morning.
Morning.
All right. Well, I'm going to let Morgan kick it off this morning with a whole litany of things.
I got a whole list, but we'll start with hiring. So the sheriff has hired three new deputies, and they will be going to the academy in January. They also hired another confinement officer. The assessor did find somebody for that second deputy opening that she had open. And the treasurer's opening for first deputy closed on Friday, so hopefully they got some good applicants and can start interviewing. And that's all I have for hiring and recruiting. I don't think we have any open positions right now, so, but we'll see how that goes.
Knock wood.
Yes. The next thing I'm going to be working on is sending out anti-harassment. We do that training every two years, and we're starting to get to that two-year mark, so I'm going to be working with IPEP on recreating the list of everybody. You know, some people need to be removed, some people need to be added, and that will be sent out in early 2026. And then the last time I, we were here, I talked about the wellness program. So I did talk to Sage at Apex, and the biggest thing we need to do is if we decide to continue the wellness program for the next plan year, is change the employee spouse and the family incentives. If we require the spouse to also do the blood work and speak to their physician, then there has to be an additional incentive for them. It can't just be the flat $50.
And that would be a federal regulation to go along with, you know, the wellness.
What would that additional incentive be?
That's up to us. It just has to be an additional incentive. Or my other thought was to keep it simple, was to just not require the spouse to do anything, but then you, we might not want to do that because the hope with the wellness program is they're catching things that are preventative early.
Okay.
Just some things to think about. We usually want those forms back in May, so times crunching.
I'm tired.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you know what other incentives do for, as an incentive?
I think the premium reduction is probably the most popular. I did ask about gym reimbursements, but they didn't have any other municipalities that did that. And of course, we already offer a discounted rate for the Y. It, it's just kind of up to you guys what you would like to do for the next plan year for the wellness program.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's all I had.
Yay. Well, we'll piggyback on that, and Steel Benefits Systems and HR have been coordinating just a boatload of things to get this, this next phase in line, which would be all of our voluntary insurances, the voluntary life insurance, the voluntary long-term disability. The other things that you had approved for Lincoln to be able to, you know, to offer, which would be the hospitalization, critical care, and was there another one? There's another one. Anyway, so we're working on that. We have, we're setting up our schedule, when we would be available to have Steel be in with their, their benefit guides to assist our employees. That will probably be the first-ish week, like the 2nd of December to the 9th, thereabouts. We're hoping to have some marketing educational materials this week so that our employees get the information that they need to make the educated choices if they so choose to go ahead and purchase any life, extra life insurance policies that they would want. Or take a look, compare what they currently have through the county or elsewhere, and what will be offered through the Lincoln and Trustmark area. So we have that going for us. And then, of course, then Steel will be with us when we do our open enrollment for the health plan in June. So this will be a great trial run with all of these ancillary policies that, that we'll be offering. Another item, we had a safety committee meeting on the 30th of October, and we covered just a boatload of things. We are going to, HR will try to put a concentrated effort toward more of our safety program. We sent out a message a couple months ago asking our department heads if they had anything specific that they wanted their departments to be trained on. So we did get some information back from them. We've, we are, we have talked to IPEP about what they have to offer so that we can, you know, continue to make our employees safe. So also, Insurance Trustees had a report on our claims, and Kyle Pearson from Insurance Trustees is very hopeful that when you guys take a look at the renewal, that our mod rate will be going down because of our claims. Let's see, how many claims do we currently have open right now?
We have one claim open. It is an indemnity claim, so he's off work with. That's only one open, and so far, I think we've only spent about $30,000. We've had 14 claims this year, but most of them have been recordable only, which is good. That's what we want. We want people to be recording anything. And, but like, that's it.
Yeah, so they, so if they report them, and then later on, you know, wow, my, my back is hurting, my knee is hurting. I, I think it, you know, when I fell off the ladder or whatever, then we have that baseline again. And IPEP can then roll on, move, move forward with any sort of work comp claim that they may have. So that's a good thing. They, they like for us to be doing that.
That's actually good for your employees too, because I used to do plaintiff's work on workers' comp, and it was always hard to prove claims where there wasn't documentation.
Right.
Too.
Yeah.
So you could have a legitimate, real claim, but if it wasn't reported correctly in the beginning, the employee loses out, so.
Yeah, so it's.
I have a question. Our renewal, what was it, our mod, mod rate?
Our mod rate, yeah. Mm-hmm, yeah.
Because our mod rate is going down.
Yes, yes, which of course, then, insurance companies take a look at that, and the cost then for our premiums should go down because of that. They won't be paying things out. So if the trend continues, which we hope it does.
Keep it going.
That's right. Yep, got to keep it going. Yeah, remember, walk like a penguin in this weather. Then we have, don't forget, performance evaluations for your department heads. We have a really good handle on the department heads who have done them for their departments, which of course is a requirement for our council. So we will be just putting out some reminders to those department heads who are still, we still have yet to receive the performance evaluations for their, their staff. And I know you guys will be working on the department heads that you need to do performance evaluations on.
One way.
I jokingly said I was going to put all the names in a hat for you.
Yeah, she did.
But I really didn't do it.
We need to determine who's going to do which.
You really, yeah, you really should, so that you can, you know, start planning ahead. We'd like to get those in within the month. Yep, so, you know, making sure your schedules and then the department head's schedules, so, you know, and you've got, you've got Pat Grant who's on the road off and on, so, you know, just, yeah, that's up to you.
Do you need a list of those department heads?
Yes.
You sent us a list?
I did, yes, yep.
You did?
I sent the list along, yeah, that was one of the first, yep.
Okay.
Yep, one of the first emails I sent out.
I'll interrupt you for a second, and correct me if I'm wrong, but on the, the insurance.
Oh, yeah.
What we've paid out this year is only 10%, basically about 10% of what it was two years ago.
Yeah.
10%.
It really is, yes.
Wow, so, yeah.
It has gone down drastically.
What are we talking about?
Pardon me?
Oh, work comp.
Yeah, work comp, yeah.
I couldn't think about which insurance we were, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, we went back to work comp.
Yeah, I backtracked a little bit there, but I, I just thought that was, that's amazing, that turnaround, and.
That is.
Well, for $30,000, it's probably 11% now, but it's still astronomical difference from two years ago.
Right, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, no, we, we appreciate that, and just to piggyback on that, IPEP that we have had for many years is a great partner for human resources. They work really well with our employees, making sure that our employees get the care that they need and deserve, and then also looking out for us as the employer. And we want to make sure that everybody is, is safe, and they do a really nice job, and they have a great safety library of trainings, and that's why we keep going back to them for so many of our trainings, because it's usually easy, it's complete, doesn't take a lot of time, which of course, time is money, but so can a work comp claim be money. So we want to make sure that these people are safe, yeah. So that's, yeah, that's about all that we have right now. Anybody have anything for us?
Questions or comments?
How was the, oh, I think you were working with Dottie on Larry's.
Yeah.
How was that coming?
I, I sent that to our job classification subcommittee a few weeks ago. I have to, that's actually on my calendar, to get back with them to see what they really want to do. We, I had one comment from one of our council members asking me if we could do it in-house based upon what, what we know of other counties, and so I, I gave them my recommendation. And, you know, we only have in that classifications. For your department heads, who are not elected department heads, we have two classifications. One is Executive A and one is Executive B. So right now, the maintenance director is in Executive A. The only place logically right now it could go bump up to would be Executive B. However, we have added a lot of duties that our current manager has been doing, and so they need to be, they need to be documented. And so I have yet to hear back from the group if they just want to do that internally, and we create based upon the job description that we currently have, if we just make those additions, or if we send it back to Wagner, Erwin, and Sheila, our consultant, to have them give us the, the educated information back. And also, does, do we need to readjust our Executive A, B? Do we need a C? So, like I said, I have that on my calendar to get back to them, because I only had that one comment.
All right.
Yeah.
Good question.
Thanks. That's great. Yep, thank you.
I was thinking about department heads and just.
I knew where it was at, but I didn't know.
Yeah.
Yep.
How far it got in that.
Yeah, yeah, not as far as I would have liked.
And it just popped in my head. I was like, oh, yeah.
Yep.
Anything else? Anyone for Dottie?
Dottie and I are meeting with Apex on Wednesday.
We do.
Is there anything you guys want to ask Apex? Are there any concerns you want to bring to them? I'm doing a review with them, just talking to them a little bit about.
I'll think about that.
Okay.
Yeah, send, yeah, send us an email.
Yeah.
And then, yeah, we'll.
I think it's something.
Yeah, you reach it.
Where are you doing it?
Oh, we're just like doing a lunch with them.
Yeah, we're doing a lunch, yeah, yep.
About kind of some, I was going to talk to them about kind of the wellness thing and some of their ideas on that, and I was going to bring it to you guys. Have a conversation with them.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Dottie.
You're welcome, sure.
Good day. Stay safe. Don't slide. No sledding down the hill. Okay, real quick, let's pay the people.
I'll make a motion to accept payroll as presented.
Motion and second, additional comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Payroll is paid. Claims. Chance to go to the claims?
Yeah. I don't have any questions. I would so move that we accept the claims as presented.
I'll second.
Look real quick, I don't think I had any notes on claims.
I had a few, but Susan answered them for me, so.
Did she?
My end.
I have nothing. Okay, we have a motion and second on the floor to approve claims, additional comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Claims are approved. We have two sets of minutes, September 29th.
We actually have three.
We have three.
I would.
I can't do this.
Took me a minute to remind, remember all the way back to like what we talked about.
Listen, it was rough.
I would so move we accept the minutes as presented for the September 29th meeting.
I'll second.
Motion second on the floor, additional comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. 29th, September 29th, claims approved. October 13th.
Minutes.
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 I got you. We're good.
I'll, I'll make a motion to accept October 13th minutes as presented.
I will second.
Motion second on the floor, October 13th minutes, additional comments. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Those are approved. Okay, October 27th, minutes.
I'll move to accept the October 27th minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Motion second on the floor, additional comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. All minutes are approved. Hopefully, we can keep up a little bit closer to the.
Well, yeah, we will now, now that I have all my stuff back.
Kind of helps to have it all back, don't it?
That was why, is because of the cyber thing.
Little cyber.
Yep.
Okay. Real quick, miscellaneous topics. Will the FIT slash CVET distribution identification?
So, okay, so I have those three, then I have these two. Those are the payroll and bookkeeper claims that went with all the other claims. Okay, so I kind of sent you guys an explanation. The way that CVET and FIT distributions happened, we would, it would come to us from the state, then we would have to break it down to a fund level, so we would have to tell other units plus ourselves which funds they needed to put their monies in, whether it would be like for fire territory or their general, things like that. We no longer have to do that for all the units. We, if we get $5,000, we send them $5,000, and it is up to them to decide what they want to do. I am requesting for the county that we continue on as we have, which we have, we break ours down by the tax rate for the county with the property taxes. So if a fund has a tax rate certified, then we use that rate and they get that percent of the funds. So for instance, like FIT for this year, like General got some, Cume Bridge, Cume Cap Development, Health Reassessment, and then the Debt Service Fund. So I am requesting that we continue it with, based on the tax rate. The majority of it goes to General anyways, but I'm just asking if you guys would approve in the minutes to continue our current process instead of putting it all directly right into County General.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, it's questions? Continue as is?
I'll make a motion to continue as is.
Thank you.
Motion second on the floor, additional comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, let's jump over into the Oxy Agency Space Study Update. Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Things are still not exactly where they're supposed to be, and there might be some mistakes with some of the data, but just note it's still a work in progress. Or do you need me to?
Light on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So for today's purposes, I wanted to let you know that we're really done with stage one. Phase one is complete. Phase two is almost complete, but phase two, three, four, and the beginning of five all kind of meshed together like an onion, and we start peeling back the layers and we look at things. So as we go through this, this is some of just the basic data. I'm going to highlight some points, and then really, I'm going to go hard and fast, but then at the end, I'm going to stay for as long and as many questions as you guys have. Sound good? Okay. So we interviewed the 28 departments. There was 27, 27 interviews. Ben at the highway department, or, yeah, highway, he said, you know, hey, our building's already been done. You need any information from me? And we had great conversations with him already, so we didn't interview him during the process again. You have a limited amount of employees that are possibly retiring in the next three to five years. We went three to five, and then maybe five to seven if we can get any more information. I know that this doesn't seem like it's important to you guys, but kind of important to us for our space study and, and how things work. So we asked about hours. 80% of our employees are on a 35-hour work week and 20% on our 40-hour work week. Probably not anything to do with space study, but just data that we collected. Both have the same benefits. The majority of our departments are fully staffed, so I know that when you see 96% are fully staffed to plan, and then you see 15% state that they actually have a staffing shortage, those numbers don't match, but just know that they were fully staffed to plan, but when we dug deeper and you get into department, some of them are nationwide issues, like probation officers, for example. It's a nationwide issue, so we have to do staffing a little differently. We have part-time. We've filled it with part-time instead of full-time. So that's why those numbers are a little different there, and in the final report, we'll break that out a little bit more. Most of our departments believe that they're fully optimized, and our employees are at capacity or above capacity. Interestingly enough, most of us, about half of us have a space shortage, and I'm pretty sure that that aligns with, there was about 50% of us that might have a storage shortage as well. That number's not. Some of the departments, one of the things that we found, and we'll talk about this more when we talk about, when we get into some of the graphs and stuff on the back, that obviously, that's why we're brought here, so some of this stuff is obvious, but not all the departments are aligned appropriately for max efficiency. Right? We have them across the street, in different buildings, we walk, even though we're really close, we still made that note. I'm going to go through some, I'm not going to read these bullet point for bullet point, but I'm going to go over highlighting some of the process data points. So some of the process data points are, there are some outdated processes. We're not going to give you those in detail today because we're still vetting that out. We made a note as a team, and we're going in. Most of those processes that we're talking about that are outdated are more interaction with the public and public space where they come in and use it, not like, you know, maybe what Susan does, not that detailed. It's more of a, how do we, how do we interact with the community? Our maintenance department, you guys said it here already, so that is also on our list, but our maintenance department, it's, you know, there's real, no real process. Everybody calls Larry. That is our process. That's a process gap. If Larry, I'm not morbid, so I always say if Larry were to win the lottery and not be here tomorrow, you guys would probably then call Evan, but there's no, for this team sitting here, there's no visibility on forward thinking, being, be able to be proactive, understand the budget, understand where every department or every building is, what, what we need to plan for in three, five years, obviously. The Sheriff's Department actually has an employee that does not report to Larry, so there's no single source of all of the information. They are using a system, so we're looking into that, so that's interesting. So we too are looking at elevating, and I'll say the position of Larry. We, we'll talk about positions and not people, but obviously, you guys were talking about Larry. One of the suggestions that our team is making, and there's probably no other suggestions in here today, but since we were talking about it here, taking Larry's position and elevating it, so we are looking at that information too. I will contact Dottie after this and see if any of the information that we're working on is beneficial for her to do it in-house, or if you guys want to go out to Wise, your advisors too, but those are already things that we're looking at, elevating that position, having some roles and accountability underneath there, having a straight line that really comes to this team, because you guys are aware and forward-thinking of more strategic things, like what does the future hold, and whose parking lot should we be paving, and what roof needs that. So with that, there's no traceable or trackable system either. It's more reactive. Am I wrong on that? It's more reactive, like, hey, this needs done, instead of in five years, we might need a budget.
Some degree, we have had roof inspections.
Yeah.
Done in the past, which tells us, you know, what's, which one needs to be replaced next. That's about it, as far as I recall.
We gave some money to the budget for the, for the courthouse specifically to help them do some more future planning, didn't we?
You gave money to be able to do things, not per se to plan ahead. I mean, the council tries to get their department's five-year needs at budget time, but I mean, I, for one, don't really, hardly ever have anything. I think the last time I submitted something was when Bill told me I needed to get my ceiling fixed because it was falling down. But I don't ever have time to think about things like that, so, yeah.
Again, we gave them that money. My understanding was that Larry would make up a plan to go forward of how, what to plan for next year, to spend it on, two years, like, start working on that stuff.
I think you guys hadn't gotten that far yet because of the job description.
Okay.
It's been more of a rainy day scenario where we put some money back ahead of time and, in case.
Okay.
This is kind of where we've been operating.
So that entire conversation is what we've identified to, and being able to, some, those are some of the things that are really easy for us.
We have some of those tools to help you guys put that in place and forward think and, and use those, CPM tools and so forth. I'm going to touch on safety. Safety presents an issue in every building, and I know that that's not our realm, but of course, we uncovered it, so we're going to share it. I know that you guys have somebody probably working on safety, but we do have a false sense of safety. We have the, the things that seem safe, but if, there's really abilities not to be. And then what does that do, what does that do in risk mitigation? So again, I know that you guys have other professionals looking at that, but we brought that up. We've also found in some of our process gaps is that our buildings or just our alignment of our teams are allowing staff, criminals, and public to intermingle in a way that probably isn't healthy for us or puts us at risk. Again, we're going to use the word risk mitigation often here, because before we present it in a final thing, I want to make sure that we get a pass from Wink Wink and Attorney to make sure that we're saying it properly or not, not causing any more friction, but, and I'll give you an example of that is in our annex building. Bill, do you need me to stand closer to this? In our annex building, we have the basement, which we usually call the red room, right? I'm in the right building?
The white room.
Yeah, so sometimes we have. Yeah, so sometimes we have, and excuse me if I'm being general, sometimes we have like our knitting women down there and they bring their little potluck, and we'll have criminals pass in the hallways, which are unsafe. The public bathrooms are also used for testing. So we're engaging public. You also have workers in that building that are not, we also have employees in that building that are not used to engaging with criminals, and we're, we're mixing them all together. So, some other processes are, I'm going to step on this landmine and not to stay here for too long, but we have non-county employees in county buildings that we do not hold accountable to county guideline.
Example?
Thank you. Example is our Purdue Extension Office is in our annex building, and I have been present when the dog has been brought to work. Does anybody else get to bring their animal to work? Is it allowed in county buildings?
It probably would be allowed if there were a service animal, but I'm not aware of any instances of it.
It's not, yeah. And it is engaging with public, and some of our, some of our other county employees have had to step out and, and take charge with. So, we're not holding, so in summary, what I'll say, highlight that, is in summary, we have non-county employees that we can't, or we currently don't. We can, we can hold those employees that are, or those employees that are in any county building that are not county employees, we should be holding them accountable to county code for our guidance. Processes, there's some processes that we have found that are possibly broken and we're digging deeper, again, just to highlight today, that don't align with our guidelines in our handbook and how we hold all of you accountable. So, for example, background check, all of the things that you go through to be a county employee, we do not vet our contractors or partners, AKA me, people like me, or cleaning companies, or our painters, or our plumbers, or anybody else. We don't, we don't put them through the same process, and they have access to our building sometimes after hours. So, again, just highlights, again, a little different than the space study, but things that we're standing on. One of the interesting things, we're kind of the cooler, we don't have a cooler for our corner, and we don't have enough space, and I'm going to mix these two together, even though they don't really go together, but we don't have a cooler for our corner and we don't have enough juvenile space for our juveniles that are in trouble. So this causes a lot of transportation and pay issues, where we pay other counties and surrounding areas to hold either or for us, and then we have to travel back and forth. So, that came up because we were asking questions about travel. Gaps in storage space and regulation. I'm sure that we're following a lot of the regulations in most of our offices, but I'll pick on IT here just for, for a minute. You know, most of IT in any organization that you walk in, they just hide everything like the mouse that doesn't work. I'm pretty sure our IT is good, but digging into those, not everybody has a regulation of what can be stored, how long does it need to be stored, how much storage space do you get, when do you have to go through it? There's not really regulations holistically. In some of the departments, obviously, like Susan, she probably has strict regulations. All right. Overall building data points, just some data points before we get into more of the tactical things. Our building is, so we have, first of all, our employees are amazing here. Everybody has been so kind and courteous when we're asking a whole bunch of questions or poking around or digging for more data, so including, including everybody in front of me today. So, a few things is we have what we call on our team, a lot of old wives' tales in our county government, and so anything that we heard, like, hey, a long time ago, this happened, or hey, we've had this done, we've asked to vet that out. So, one of the things that we heard is that our building is on the historical registration, and we went out and verified that. It was on it because downtown Auburn was on it, so we were part of it, but then back in the early eighties, or late eighties, early nineties, one of you all, or people prior to you, obviously registered the building itself. So, it is on. One building obviously needs tore down, I don't think that, I think we can probably all agree and guess which one that is. New building process, our process of building new buildings potentially has some gaps in it. My team has found that sometimes just vetting that out overall, we might over-engineer and that you as commissioners, we're not sure that you guys have anybody on your side looking at all the people that you partner with, like somebody really saying, hey, if you're not going to do this for seven, 10, 12 years, don't add this now. So, we'll give you some recommendations on that. And then the overall building too, is each department has their own small, like, break area, but in general, there's no large break area for everyone, and then same with some of our restrooms. All right, so let's go through the buildings really quickly. The easy one is the Building and Planning Department. The only positive that my team found is that you have people that were willing to occupy that building for work. With a smile. Obviously, we all know the negatives. We are joking that, actually, we're praying, not joking, we're actually hoping that we never have a building code issue with any of our local contractors that have to come and pull permits, that we deny something because there's going to be a fight that I don't even think our own building will pass our own code. So, obviously, that is, the space is not optimized, the space is not safe, there are holes in the floor. We have public coming in and out of that building, not just workers. So I know that we talked about workman's comp and, and all kinds of risk mitigation here prior to me. That is something that we should have our eye on, because as long as we have that building occupied or people being able to access in and out, we probably are at risk. So, yeah, that's really all I have to say about that.
That probably do it.
And, you know, overall, it doesn't represent our county, county well. We have so many beautiful buildings, it's, it's a little bit embarrassing, I think. Our courthouse, it's beautiful. Our community loves it. If I ask or poke around anything about the courthouse, man, they're like, that is not going to, and I'm like, nobody's saying it's going anywhere. So, everybody loves it, it's registered on the team, the teams work well together, even your employees in the building love it. The negatives, obviously, are the safety, the lack of large meeting rooms, the bathroom, I'm not sure would pass ADA code right now. But again, and I know if you touch them, you have to then update it all. It could be difficult for, seasonally, it could be difficult, difficult for our elderly people to get in and out, especially during that rush, because they have to take the stairs, and I've heard stories, or we've heard the old wives' tales of every tax season, somebody's hurt, or the EMS has to come for some reason. Your elevator is really small. I know that it's working now. And we spent, we did the investment to do that, but I also know that you can't get, there's probably a technical word. What are the structures? Okay, yeah, you can't get that laying down in our elevator. It has to be, it has to be propped up.
I just want to clarify, the restroom, second floor, they're not public restrooms, not that it makes a difference with ADA, but they're not public, they're employee only.
Thank you. I will, I will definitely take that. Storage space is limited, right? You're not going to get any more storage space under, under the building. The jail walk can sometimes be, could be like a process gap that we found, because you're intermingling. False sense of safety, again. I had, we did a study, actually, it was personally me, and actually, I think a couple of you at times, we've met over at the coffee shop. I did that intentionally, especially when the work was being done on the outside, and this is not disparaging against Larry at all. This is watching Larry and his team work, and it would be easy to take over Larry or his team and not look like you caused a public disturbance and gain access to one of the doors that are only accessible by employees. Right? So you could just walk up with firearm in your pocket, walk up to Evan or Larry, ask them to act normal and get you in the back, and, so that's what we mean kind of by false sense of safety, is because they're accessing doors, as other employees, that you can access other doors, and yet, you can sit and watch and watch people. So, things to think about. Annex building. Positives about it is its location is really close, which makes it so easy. Other positive about it is it is a sought-after piece of real estate on the market currently. I think it's pretty valuable. And then it has a newer roof. I think that's one of the buildings that we have that talks about a newer roof. Again, false sense of security. This is where we talked about our public, our staff and our criminals intermingling in an unsafe way. We also have, so interesting fact, I believe one of your, and we haven't went over to measure it, but we're pretty close on our, on our rough drafts, is our Purdue Extension Office probably has more of that space than any of our county workers. It is used for storage more than people, and there's lots of space in the middle of it that is at least this large in your desk for like a mailroom. They also have the red room. The red room downstairs, right, is theirs to use. We all have to schedule, schedule it if we want it. So, this food for thought, I don't know, we're working on what are those regulations and what does that mean, but it seems pretty odd to our team from the outside looking in that you have a non-county department that is taking up so much space in that one building. And then the restroom conditions, we've talked about a lot of that in the process. We've talked about, we have key employees in the basement, and the basement is not, again, wives' tales, and we're working to prove it out, but you can smell mold when you walk down there, and it does have a history of flooding, true statement, it has flooded in the past. Your air circulation is not well down in the basement, and I'm pretty sure that there's some active shooter, shooter safety concerns. Not that anybody would walk in that building with all of those gentlemen in there, but you're, you have no, you have no good way out quickly. So, again, risk mitigation concern. Positive about our health surveyor and VA department, it's a nice building, the structure seems new, it's in a great location, easiest, easy for us to get to. I, I think that that one too, if I recall, and embarrassing, I should know off the top of my head, but that one is pretty highly sought after on the real estate market as well. Negatives, I don't think our parking lot is laid out efficiently. I don't know what you guys drive, but I drive a truck, and maybe it's just because I'm little and drive a big truck, that it's hard to get into the parking spaces. The parking spaces are standard at least, but they don't give you any extra room, and it's busy most oftentimes. I went there several different days during the week, and obviously, we know Wednesdays are the worst. So, parking is limited. The, there's a lot of wasted space in that building as well, as the hallways, those interconnecting hallways take up a lot of space. This building too, when we look at the people process, they are one of the departments that do not have efficient space to serve our community in the way that they're meant to serve our community. Like our, our health department, they are crammed and, and they're, we're doing a disservice to our community with the space they're in. Same as our VA department. Do you guys know that your VA is like one of the top in the state? They are doing amazing things over there. People from other counties come over. And, yeah, so, they, they're making their space work as well, but they don't have sufficient space to service the community like, like they would like to. Those three departments don't, they don't collide, but they don't intermingle well either, and the restrooms are behind a locked door, which makes it hard for some of our veterans that come in, because somebody's always losing efficiency and work by having to unlock the door. But that seems to be the Achilles' heel over there. So with all of that said, and to wrap out phase one, and this part of this was phase two, some additional work that we've decided that we want to do and just thumbs up, thumbs down, we want to talk to actually some of the boards and committees that we have. So we have like a drainage board, we have a couple other committees. Our team's probably going to go out and talk to them too. Okay, so, details of phase one, or phase two, phase three, phase four, and phase five are in here, and we're in the midst of all of the, the work right now. So what you'll see, and a reminder that everything in here is a snapshot, so it's hard to read, but they're snapshots of our Excel documents that we're working on for the team, or for you guys to actually use. So we're doing a zoning functional group, and what this does is this breaks down the groups and the departments that work together, so like your judicial system, your administrative, your health and, health and public safety. It's putting the departments there so that we can do a mapping more accordingly. Again, probably won't change overnight, but that you can see the workflow of the functioning areas. We've also added the security zone, which is kind of like at the bottom, and that just tells us who should be, like, what recommended based on their role and title and department in the, in our county, what level of safety they should be, or security they should be under, recommended, and again, not set in stone yet. And then it breaks it down, the larger section is where it's broke down in, by department. So you see the first little section that starts it is the recommendation, then we broke it down by department. We also have a snap, I know I told you it was a lot of data. We are in like data HE double hockey. So, then we went to department functional groups, that gives a little bit more, and this is going to, this is where we're really mapping, like, how many times the auditor and the assessor and the treasurer kind of collide? Is it daily? Is it weekly? Is it monthly? And what processes are they most engaged in? And Susan, I keep picking on you just because you're sitting in front.
That's all right.
That is why we had to do the workflow, so there's a little snapshot of workflow. Not every single one of your processes will be workflowed, but the key ones that engage with the community or super-functional for the roles in our county, we will be mapping. I don't know if you guys will, I think you guys will find value in that, but for us, that helps us optimize the space and decide where you need to put. So I know it seems like a lot of workflow or a lot of process, but it, it really matters to where their functionally spaced together. Then if you turn over to the last page, you'll see this acronym RACI, R-A-C-I, and this is where we're, we're mapping out in departments and some of the, and so this is where I'm going to be asking you guys probably more questions, based on our initial interviews and some of the weird questions that we asked everyone. It was really to get an oversight of this, to kind of prove out some of our, what we know or what we don't know, but we'll be coming back in and asking more questions. So RACI is a project management tool that most organizations or, you know, communities use, and it's who is responsible, who needs to be responsible, who is accountable for the function, who needs to be consulted, right? Like, so you guys play consulting role in a lot of different functions, and then who just needs to be informed, which sometimes is the community, sometimes is the person who started the process. But we are mapping that out in the Calhoun County as well, with all the departments. And then that will lead, all of that work will lead to this beautiful heat map. This is a sample only, because if you saw yours, it's really ugly right now. But this is a sample only of what it will look like, and the intention of this is you will see the darker areas are the ones that are higher engaged with each other and the community, and then you can resort it to, it creates kind of like an arrow or a flow, so that you can see visually what departments work, work together often and how they engage with the community, and then we can make better decisions about, you know, what a seven years look like. So again, that one is absolutely a sample and not yours, because yours is really not pretty at this moment. Okay. With all of that said, that was a lot of information. What questions do you guys have?
Questions, comments?
Just for the record, Kelly and Space Study Committee has been meeting every two weeks. So this, this process wasn't just started yesterday. Whatever that date was.
August 11th was our launch, and August 21st was our first interview that started.
We've been meeting every two weeks. Kelly's been just really great working with and has kept us up to date on where they're at, and I know this is the first presentation to the commissioners, but it's been very in-depth. As we move forward, I expect it'll be more in-depth. Have some good recommendations when we get done with this. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Jane.
It's been good working with you.
Thank you. Helen, one other thing too that I didn't put in here, but I wanted to note that we are working on, because I brought it to your attention and you said, yes, please, is we are working on an org chart. So I didn't bring a sample of that.
You're working on a what?
The org chart.
Okay.
Just a visual, it's not going to change anything, but when we benchmark other, other municipalities that are like ours, and we're, we're benchmarking them and and we're, we're benchmarking them in different states. And I think that I can pull this. I think it's Iowa, Illinois and Colorado. There's a couple of counties in each one of those that are very similar to ours. They all have like an org chart and I just thought that since we're in depth anyway, we would just create it.
Hey, anything else?
Nothing.
I guess I just have one FYI. I do have a courthouse security meeting this Friday at eight o'clock with the judge and several of us. And this will be an interesting topic at that meeting. And I assume at some point in the future, maybe we could get you involved with one of those meetings?
Sure. Anything that you, anything that I can be assistance of. If you would like me by this Friday to send you just summarize of the actual security, um, risks that we see, I'd be more than happy just to summarize that for you.
Do that, please.
Yep. And send it to all three, all of the three of you. Okay.
Be fine.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Absolutely.
Okay. Let's jump over into DART. We're close. What you got?
Morning, everybody. All right, so quarter three update. We still have our fleet affected by the safety recalls that I reported, uh, reported last quarter. Three vehicles are still down. We're still having troubles with them getting the parts for our vehicles. I did hear word when I went to INCOST that the 2025 vehicles are getting repaired. So hopefully our 2023, 2024s are next. So we're still operating with three down. Right now we got, at the end of quarter three, we had 12 drivers currently employed. Out of the 12, two were full-time, 10 part-time. Uh, I was looking to hire a part-time driver to replace one, uh, to come on board for us. I also want to hire another driver when we get our three vehicles back on the road. But right now I just kind of had to scale back because we just don't really have the fleet for it, for our demand. We wrapped up our WIL Trans agreement. Uh, that was something I let you guys know last quarter. That was our non-emergency medical transportation provider. We go into partnership with them. It allows us to do more transportation for people and be paid through the provider. We begun doing trips for them on October 16th. But again, until our fleet is in full operation, um, we're doing what we can for them, but we can't guarantee every trip they send us. And then I have submitted a grant for the decals on the fleet. I'm paused on this project right now. I'm waiting to hear if I get approval for the grant itself. Uh, that was something I went in on through United Way. So I should be finding out here soon. And then hopefully if we get it, the vans will go in and get decal and hopefully liven up our fleet on the roads for us. I didn't really have a lot for you guys today like normal. Just needing to get the invoice signed for quarter three so I can submit it to INDOT. But yeah, do any of you have questions for me?
Just a comment. I hope you get your three vehicles back. I mean, that seems like a long time already.
I know. They've been down since, uh, July. Yeah, it's been a little rough. There were, there were a lot of conversations at INCOST about the fleet vehicles. Uh, our surrounding counties have been affected, some more than us. Uh, one had four vehicles go, get pulled from their fleet. In the whole general state of Indiana, numbers were coming out through INDOT and we were trying to pull together. If we needed to ask for resources of another van from someone else, we could. But it's a lot harder because again, they're running at their demand and so it's hard for them to allow others to use their vehicles. We had people trying to sell us vans, but you know, trying to explain to them how we do our van purchases and stuff was a little, little rough there for a hot minute. Yeah, it's just, it's crazy. The parts, I mean, we've dealt with part issues all year. Anytime we have an OEM part, it seems to be months that we're waiting to even get the vehicle back on the road. But yeah, this one being a safety recall with the airbags. We're waiting.
How many total vehicles do we have?
Twelve.
Well, how many drivers do we have?
Twelve currently. And then out of them, 10 were the full-time or 10 were part-time, two full-time.
Do we have a need for all those vehicles at the same time?
We don't, you, like, sometimes they're not all on the road at the same time. Well, right now, three of them definitely aren't. We're running our fleet pretty hard. When we had 12 vehicles, we were able to have a lot of leeway with having, uh, vehicle maintenance issues, pulling in for oil changes. We don't typically run all 12 at the same time, but we do, we flip-flop them around based on the demand of the, the client and what that van can equip.
Oh, I see there's a reduction in rider participation. Uh, what, from this year to last year?
Last year, yep.
Yes. Is there a, uh, specific reason that that has, has happened?
That one would be based on the non-emergency medical transportation providing. Uh, that's why I was working so hard to partner with, uh, WIL Trans. When pathways came in last year, significantly dropped our ridership. Coming into this year, we used to carry them. That's the data you can see in the previous year. So that's how you can see our trips went down. I know that our rides are going up though, as I'm doing my month-end reporting. And I was hoping to get them back above that number, but with the three vehicles down, I think we're going to just, within a year, level it back out having WIL Trans.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Need a motion on this?
Yes, please.
A move to pay the invoice for quarter three for DART?
Second.
Motion, a second on the floor, additional comments? Comments from the public? Are those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carries. Sign in blue.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me, where'd she go?
Right here.
Do you want to just send this to me? Like email it?
Well, you said it, the signed one?
Yeah. You can either take an email or I'll email it to you.
Oh, yeah, I'll email it.
Phil, do you want to jump to the animal ordinance?
Yes.
She's here.
Yes, let's do that.
And you guys did first reading already, so this is second.
Second and third reading.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So would you like me just to read through it? Or?
That's up to them. I provided it. We have a little thing that if I provide it within 24 hours of the meeting, you know, 48 hours of the meeting, then, um, we don't have to read it word for word. They can pass it by title only. So that, we don't have to read it, but if they have questions.
You want to read it?
I don't need to read it. It's up to you.
I'm fine with doing title only.
Aye, yes. Okay.
I would so move that we accept the Calab County Commissioner's, uh, amended animal control ordinance, number 20, 2025 dash O dash eight, uh, as presented on second and third reading.
I'll second.
Okay, motion, a second on the floor, additional comments? Comments from the public? Are those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. You're all set.
All right. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
I'll get it recorded and then we will, um, send you a copy.
Okay, sounds great. How is it officially official now?
Yep.
It's official.
Okay, great.
You're off and running.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, let's jump on down to invoice cloud contract renewal with one-year term renewals.
Okay, so invoice cloud, that is, um, what the treasurer uses. And originally they had, I believe it was a three-year, um, renewal and they're getting ready to be done with the three years. They've worked with the company and with attorney Cruz so that they have this renewal to only be one year and not a full three years. So, um, they just, they need you to approve entering into that contract for a one year.
Andrew, you looked it over? I did and, uh, I'm very glad that they were willing to change it to one year. The terms were the same from last year. Just change it to the one year, that's it.
Yeah, she said, they're coming to the end of their three-year contract, which is the online invoice cloud. That's where they pay online. You can pay your payments online. It was set up automatically to renew for another three years. However, they've asked Andrew to negotiate with them and then change the contract to a one-year renewal. So they just provided the amended contract so that.
And part of the problem is that the invoice cloud has not been their needs. But they are not yet ready to change to another program. So if they don't do the next year, I mean, they wouldn't be able to still operate using anything at this point. So this is the best they, they could do and they were willing to do just a one year. I know that, uh, I think Joni had a very. Yes. Then on, um, 2.1 section, it says additional succession, automatically renewal for each additional year. We're not going to get caught in a, a certain timeframe to have to do a termination letter?
Might have to do a termination, uh, let's see.
It doesn't, it, I didn't understand, I didn't see where that would be. If it has to be 90 days prior, 30 days or anything like that?
I had noted there, yes, there is definitely another notice that's required. And 90 days is, so yes, there would be another non-renewal notice required. I know gave them a non-renewal notice already, but I advised them, I believe like in April to do another one. I had some back and forth with her. So basically well ahead of that 90-day deadline. It's not a window of 90 to 120 like it is with the Otis contract. It's just anytime prior. We did tell them we only wanted to do a one, one year and we were not doing it for longer than that. So theoretically that might be enough notice, but I also told Joni that they would need to do another notice like in April.
It just doesn't say when we have to have it by.
The contract did have that language in there and I think it's, it'd be like, yeah, 90 days prior to the end of the, so the original contract was 90 days prior to the end of the three-year contract period. But I think it's the same.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, yep.
Other elevator situation. Don't want another elevator situation where we don't get into that window, that small window.
Let's do another non-renewal well ahead of time.
Yep.
Motion.
So moved.
We have a motion, a second on the floor. Additional comments? Comments from the public? Are those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Devail Credit Card Payment Service Agreement and World Pay Submitter Agreement.
Actually, let's skip that one for a minute. Because I'm, I need to be able to look at my email for something I was waiting on.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, here's a good one. Humane Shutter Contract. We love this one.
A fun time. Go ahead, Jim.
What you got, Jim?
So, this is the proposed contract. Has been submitted to the Calumane Society. They will be having their meeting, I believe, next week, I believe. And hopefully they can approve it as well. But I'm asking you gentlemen to approve this contract as it's presented. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Carolyn, any questions, comments?
Jim, a couple of times, I do like that they're going to report, do quarterly reports. And that gives a little more transparency of where that money's going and what's actually happening out there. I think a little bit. The cost is good. I, I'm, I'm happy with it. Jim and I have talked a couple of times and without any issues I had, so.
Same here. And, uh, Andrew, you had to report your, for the contract.
It's a good transition to getting a, uh, a, a, a more perfect contract eventually. This one is a, a, a good step in the right direction, so I'm comfortable with it because some of this is a give and take between organizations. This, like Helen said, is a, has some accountability bit built into it. I know that's, uh, an important thing for you commissioners as you've been looking at it is, let's see what, they're willing to do for the money and then also what the stats are, what they are doing.
All right.
An additional note, uh, they have to give a quarterly report of how many animals they've taken care of. And then they have to do an annual report for Andrew's recommendation. Both of those reports have to be within 30 days after the end of the quarter or the year, giving us at least an average cost of what the housing and care provided for the domestic cats and dogs that they have. So at least we can, we, not only the commissioners, but taxpayers in general, will have, uh, some accountability of what our money is being spent for. Fair money's being spent for, so. That has not been the case in the past.
Okay. Motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Second, motion, a second on the floor, additional comments? Comments from the public? Are those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. What we gotta do is get through John Henry on the line, right?
Okay, so. Do you guys need to sign one of these?
Yes.
Yep.
Let's see what I did.
No, I did not put all three of us on there. I figured president was.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Because it's a contract. Pardon me? Because it's a contract. Right, yes. And then Susan?
Yes.
After you have it, you email the, that signed copy so I can send it to them. Appreciate it. Send to the Humane Society. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your work on that. Now if we get them to sign, we'll be all set. Okay. Did the ordinance, animal control ordinance, that's done. Sunny Mendles combined report acknowledgement. What you got, Carolyn, on Sunny Mendles, anything?
My reports, Susan on that one. We just have to approve it every month.
So I had sent, we have August, September and October. All the combined reports showing what came in and what went out that. You guys have to sign the front of these after you acknowledge you received them.
We're just acknowledging receipt, correct?
Yep.
You want to do all of them at? Do you want to do all of them at once, Bill, or do you want to do each one separately?
I think we can do them all at once. It's just the acknowledgement especially.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to acknowledge the receipt for Sunny Meadows combined report for the months of September, October, and August.
Second.
Okay, motion and second on the floor, additional comments, comments from the public. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Oh.
It won't matter.
We don't care.
But the other two are not.
Yep.
It's a rose between the thorns.
Yeah.
Okay, we're just settling along here. County Treasurers, October report acknowledgement. Chance to look that over?
Did.
See, the funds have grown some, obviously, with all payments coming in. I expect next month will grow some more.
Yep.
So acknowledgement.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah, acknowledging receipt of it.
So move to acknowledge the October treasurer's report as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second on the floor, additional comments, comments from the public. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Hey, we got one more list, we got 15 minutes. Elevator maintenance, another favorite subject.
Annull them today.
Where we at on this?
Oh, Lord.
The debacle.
So... I don't even know where to start. So the decision today that needs to be done would be for the jail maintenance. If you want to... Actually, Andrew might need to... We have Otis that sent us a contract to renew. And then we got a quote from Executive, which obviously is a lot less expensive. What I don't know on this other one, I don't know if we have a, like, if we need to give a notice or...
We will.
Sure how that went on jail.
So I saw that on the jail one, my understanding is that it, and, okay, so... So I had an email from you, Susan, I think, saying that there was an invoice that gave August 2026.
Yeah.
But the, their contract did not have the automatic renewal for five years. Because that was back in 2005, and that was crossed off. We'd have to look to the most... I don't know if the 2005 contract is the most recent one.
2005? I don't even know anything about 2005.
Or 2023 contract.
I have a 2019 that shows Sheriff Chirp signed the elevator repair order. And it said that there would be a contract addendum signed or approved. But there was not ever anything attached to that. Then I have the 23 one that they approved the modernization of the jail, but, or of that jail elevator. And then the little checkbox that was chosen.
Take a look at that.
This one, what I highlighted. But I also don't show that we ever had anything.
No maintenance.
Maintenance thing attached to it, according to that checkmark thing. I can't tell you how many hours it took me Friday to try to piece this all together.
It looks like the sheriff's contract was totally separate, courthouse contract.
Correct.
It does look like.
This is the end of it.
There is no automatic, well, there's, there's no automatic five-year renewals. Whenever they started that contract, they had the automatic five-year renewal. Either weren't in place or it was literally crossed off and kept it. So the question is...
But they're trying to put it in their new one.
Yeah, I would...
It says the commencement date on this one would be October 1st of '25. The initial term of this contract will be for five years, beginning on 10/125.
10/125.
Which is past.
That's why I was confused when they were saying that they gave August 2026 as the contract ending date. Hard to tell from them. I guess I would suggest getting out of the Otis track, herbal wheel.
Well, I mean...
For them, if we can.
I mean, Otis is going to charge, I mean, I did the math. Otis is going to charge $2,650 for the jail, and Executive's going to charge $700 a year.
Right.
I mean, there's, I mean, that alone right there is enough to even at least give Executive a try.
And then trying to figure out.
Their contracts, yeah.
Contracts, it's just...
I just wanted to make sure people are watching, they can understand the, why we're going through all this process. Because, I mean, it's almost triple.
Yeah, so the Otis suggestion is $220.88 per month, but paid upfront per year. And Executive is charging $175 per quarter.
Yep.
And Executive, we, well, we kind of have both for the courthouse. But Executive is where we're heading for the courthouse.
So what I'd suggest is that we confirm with Otis that we're terminating with them before we sign on with.
Executive.
Executive. Because I think that was, yeah.
Yeah, which was going to be my question, is that contract that Susan just referred to from Otis.
Yes.
That it is, that's, that was their proposal, but it's not a signed contract by the commissioners, correct?
Correct.
This, the one that?
Yeah.
No. It was, it just came.
Yeah.
So the only question is, are they going to try to say that automatically renew? Re-contract.
Which we don't have.
Maybe an official letter from the county attorney to them.
Yeah.
That...
Yeah, because I asked Brady, and Brady doesn't have anything extra either to this. And he had just gotten an email from them saying that they didn't have a signed agreement.
No signed agreement? This would be a perfect time to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
You follow up on that 10/4, Andrew?
When was, yes. Do you have a clue when last time the jail was serviced?
That I don't know.
Well, the other part, and, um, maybe you can get with Brady before you send that. The other part is I know that Brady is having a terrible time. Like, they'll ask questions on what they're charging for, and they're having a terrible time of getting an answer of what they're actually being charged for on their invoices.
From Otis, is from Otis?
Yeah, because the CNN was on that string of invoices. They have all this maintenance costs, and yet they have some, or...
Some of that should be under the, maybe under the...
And then they add on something else. And it's like, does this cover some of these minor issues? But evidently, it doesn't, because they ding us every time with another bill.
I think we're all on the same page here.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we just gotta make sure we don't have another courthouse situation.
Yeah.
Right, that's all.
I think so too. I was just trying to...
Yeah, why don't you do a motion to...
For the attorney to...
Yeah, to notify Otis that you're terminating their contract with them and confirming when that termination is happening. And then, I guess you could also do a vote at the same time to accept the executive.
That's what I was asking.
Once we're terminated.
Well...
That's why I was asking, once, if it's been serviced, that we may terminate the Otis and see, make sure. And then we can accept the, I don't want to do both at the same time.
Well, the thing is, is we've paid them, we've paid them their annual thing for, to do maintenance until August of '26.
To Otis?
You've already paid Otis?
Yeah, remember, I had to pay that.
For the jail or for...
I had to pay that invoice, because they kept telling it. Plus, we had to pay a late fee, I think, because they kept telling us we had to pay it, and I... We were in the middle of trying to figure this out, and so...
Well, then we could just...
I'd make a motion.
Vote later to do the contract starting as of August or something.
I'd make the motion to have you send a letter to terminate the contract for Otis.
Okay.
With Otis?
With Otis, yeah.
Yeah. Motion and a second on the floor, additional comments, comments from the public.
And we can talk about the executive thing another time, so.
Yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Okay, I'll do that.
Get it figured out, Andrew, have fun.
And if we can get out of that before August of next year.
Yes.
Get out of it.
I doubt we'll get any money back, but not sure on that.
We could get done with Otis, that would be good.
We could always ask.
We can ask.
We can ask. Okay, ready for a break?
Yes.
Let's do a break. Let's do a break.
All right, we're back on.
Mr. Parker.
Well, good morning, guys, how are we this morning?
Oh, we're fine, fine and dandy.
I'm finding, trying to find the culprit that ordered the snow, but I haven't had anybody confess to that yet.
I ordered it.
You ordered it?
Yeah, I kind of like it. I was going to have to deal with it.
Well, I'd probably like it a little bit more if I didn't have to deal with it, but.
Yeah, see, it's on perspective of your job.
It is, and, yep, I'm going to enjoy the day when I can look out the window and say, yep, it's snowing, and turn back and not have to worry about it. So, but anyway.
Uh, few things on my agenda today for you guys, uh, first one up is the countywide bridge inspection cycle for twenty-twenty-sixth to twenty-twenty-nine. Uh, sent you guys an email with the contract information, and the BFNS was our selected firm for this inspection cycle. And I also sent you a little bit of a reason why the cost went up due to some more SNBI requirements from the state. It requires more work on the consultants, so that's why the cost went up from the last cycle. The total cycle cost three hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars, that's over a four-year term. But we'll do a phase-one cycle, phase-one A, so the phase-one cycle's a complete inspection cycle of all of our bridges. Phase-one A will be any that's got a critical finding or a weight limit on the bridge. And then phase-two will be another complete cycle in phase-two A, and then we'll go through the process again, selection firm. So, our share will be sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty cents over that four-year term. And that price is broke down between the cycles of inspections. Now, that cost could change a little bit, that for some reason that our, we have a bridge that comes up that changes inspection cycle or routine, which we never know, we hope not, but that could happen. So, I did review this before, we can review this, since this is a state contract as well, this was sent off to NDOT, NDOT approved it, sent me back an approval. I sent it off to Andrew Cruz, and, and he reviewed it. Yep, so this is NDOT's contract form, you pull it right off their website, the consultants do, and we, they fill it out, so. Uh, it's a template through MDOT, but I'm okay with the, with the contract, I'm, I'm good with Butler-Fairman-Cypher, I think. Hopefully, they'll do us a good job they have in the past. So, if you guys are acceptance of that, I have the contract here for all three to sign, and Susan to attest.
Okay. Questions, comments, motion?
I'll move that we accept the contract as first.
I'll second.
May I motion second on the floor, any additional comments? Comments from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
You want me?
Okay.
Then on the front page of that contract, you'll have to write the date on that one, too, Susan. I got it on mine, but.
Okay.
I just want to tell you for yours.
That was eighty percent is, uh, renew, uh, refundable, that just comes back from the state?
We pay it all upfront first, and then they refund us back.
Okay, not like a grant or anything, it's just, they just, okay.
No, it's not a grant. I mean, kind of, I guess you can kind of look at it like a grant, but. Yep, yeah, just so we follow their policies and contract. Bill, I'm going to write the date on yours, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay. I will get this off, and. Next thing I have for discussion is the permits that we've been working on updating. Find where I was at here. Got a little more organized here. Okay, so going forward with the permits here. Uh, I've been back and forth with Andrew on some language and some comments that we've updated, if I remember correctly, so correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, but. Um, and then he was going to work with his staff on getting an ordinance started, but I'm not sure if he's got that started, he was short-staffed last week, so. Um, if not, that's fine, I think we might have the permits, the ordinance for the permits. Okay. So, I did do an update on the, let me go to the special extra heavy-duty permit I sent you guys, I just want to confirm that you're okay with that. That is the SDI permit, and I call it the SDI road permit, so this is the ones that the trucks use to haul the steel coils in and out. The prior permit, when I had it in here, we discussed the costs and the fees, and I added some language that Andrew wanted. I did not have a description of the vehicle in there, so it made it easy to pass it all around, so on the, on this updated one, I put the description of vehicles. You know, have the make, license numbers, the state, and then the VIN number of the tractor and trailer. That way, it's truck-specific, it's not a, make a bunch of copies and send around. Yeah. So, um, I did, I did do that update on there. And. description of, excuse me, the highway department application for oversized and overweight. I made the adjustments that we talked prior. The only thing I added on this one, there was no number of axles. I placed that on this one as well. And then I included the fees, so maybe I'll touch base on that just to make sure we're still okay with the fees.
Which way, which one was that?
That was the overweight one.
Yeah, the overweight, okay.
Yep. So let me back, back up to the SDI one. I'm sorry, Susan, I'm not trying to confuse you.
I got the SDI one.
We have fees, a hundred dollars per single move.
Yep.
And then a thousand dollars for an annual permit from approval date. Is that the fee everybody still wants to stick with?
That works.
And then on.
Do you wanna do that one first?
We did that one, okay, so we did the fee one last time, so.
But, yeah, but he added language.
I add language on the description of vehicles. That, that will be covered in the ordinance when that comes through. When you adopt the ordinance, you should adopt these permits as they are. I think the only thing we really need to vote on today is if we're gonna change the fees. If Andrew agrees, but I think.
Right. Yeah.
Right. Oh, but if, if there's a change, I'd like to have, once we, I'm hoping once we get these today.
And we.
We'll send these to Andrew and say, this is what I want the ordinance off of, so.
Yeah, discussion.
I think that was, the other language we added in here. Talked to Andrew on the SDI permit. We put any violations of this permit could result in revoke of current permit and any future permits. So that was added. That was SDI permits. Is there any other discussion on that one or anything else you guys would like to have?
I don't think so. Not me.
On the overweight permits, this is for countywide. I added the number of axles to the permit from when we was here last. The fees on that was a hundred dollars per move, five hundred dollars per annual permit from approval date.
My question is, this isn't gonna override, they can't get this permit and put it on SDI?
No, permit has, yes, so as what, I'm, I sent that ordinance to Andrew, the current SDI overweight permit. I'm guessing we'll be doing an amendment to that perm, that ordinance, adopt this language in this permit. And then the other ones will come under our new permit, our new ordinance, excuse me.
I just don't want someone getting that one for five hundred annually and just start running down the road on SDI.
No, 'cause this will be County Road 61 ordinance. My understanding, so unless we need to do something different. SDI, this is County Road 61.
Yeah, my question was, if you get the countywide one, are you allowed to run down County Road 61 as much as you want to? If you get the five hundred dollar countywide annually?
Right. But that.
There may be, maybe an exception on that ordinance, the countywide one, except County Road 61.
Yeah, I think that's why we'll have to do something like that, just to make sure.
Add that in, maybe.
Well, but there's.
That'll make the five hundred to a thousand and make it even.
If we have, if we have something that does not fit under this criteria of a hundred and thirty-four thousand pounds, we would have to go to this and make it an exemption for 61, like the superload that come through. So that's where this permit would come through, but it may have to, every day usages ought to be this. Me and Andrew will have to talk about that, make sure we get some language. Yep.
Okay.
But that should be County Road 61, oh, I call it the SDI permit, it's not SDI, it's County Road 61, just for people don't get confused, but. Well, just so we get that language correct. I'll think about that, we'll get it.
Okay.
Hey, since six, County Road 61 goes north of County, of State, US 6, if we don't differentiate, that means they can travel on County Road 61 all the way to Hamilton.
Well, this says. I'm looking.
Six, yeah.
Well, yes, but the overpass.
DeKalb County Board of Commissioners.
US 6 and go north, they come back south.
Yeah, but it specifies on here, "DeKalb County Board of Commissioners grants permission to preventee to operate a special extra heavy-duty vehicle as described below on designated route of DeKalb County Road 61 from DeKalb County Road 44, United States Highway US 6 set forth in ordinance 2004, Day 5, Section 91, Day 6, Day 1." Just that curve. Right. So that specifies this is only between County Road 44 and US 6 on 61.
Well, I, I just didn't want.
You didn't want people just going north to Hamilton, which you can't do that.
Right, that's what I was concerned is, yeah, on 61 going north.
But we'll find ways to get around it.
What if they come south?
Can't go south of 44.
Not supposed to.
They're not supposed to, but they do, of course.
Well, it's enforceable.
Yes, come through town. Are those overload? May not.
I would assume, but I.
That's what they do.
Our permit. Because typically eight does not allow them loads, State Road 8, and then our permit does not south of 44.
It wouldn't, it doesn't look like it's in effect.
That was the, at least that's what I recall.
If it is, then they're ignoring it as they come through town. I see them. I think it's good then it specifies 44 up to 6, and that spells it out. They shouldn't become.
You have it in an ordinance that way, but not to be enforced. That's another question.
Well, we couldn't.
Andrew, you can check into this, but I don't think on a state highway, like State Road 8, that you can differentiate between. I don't think you can say you can't travel on State Road 8. I don't.
If they do, they'll have it from getting there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
61 south would be county.
Because they can go, if that's the case, they can go State Road 8, State Road 1, the US 6, back up around. But if they take State Road 8 to 59 slash 61.
But they wanna do the extra miles, that's on them, basically, right?
Yeah, well, they're not going to. Especially with their GPS telling them not, you know, where to turn and.
But when they, if they file, if they're overweight, they know by law they have to file for overweight permits on any routes that's traveled, whether it's state, county, city, town. So when they file, they'll have the permit, they will know their designated route. I mean, we just hope that everybody honors that, same thing, there's speed limits signs everywhere, but people drive way over it. There did, it's supposed, six, or 61 north is a designated truck route for SDI, New Millennium, all that out there. Right, but.
We'll see.
That would have to be enforced to however they wanna. Okay, anymore on the 61 permit? Anything else on the 61 permit?
Uh, not me, no.
Well, then on the regular overweight permit throughout the county, we had the fees of a hundred dollars per move, five hundred dollars for an annual permit from approval date. Now, if you guys wanna change that, we can change that to match a thousand, but or we'll leave it at the 500. Okay, either way, that's your guys' discretion.
I'm good with 500.
Yeah, I was, I just wanna make sure it was, who doesn't get this permit and then go down 61 all the time?
And then the right-of-way cut permit, this is the one that's mostly for residents, farmers in the county to put a private utility in our road right-of-way. That fee is fifty dollars for any work done within DeKalb County right-of-way. And then we also have an ordinance that goes along with this that designates the cost for putting a private utility in the right-of-way. So they're gonna pay fifty dollars for this permit, and then the other one will designate, rather, they gotta put signage up, they'll have to pay for the signs. It specifies the depths, and if it's an open cut, I think it's five hundred dollars. If it's a bore, it's like two fifty that goes along with this permit. So all we've added to this permit, because we get these for people that wanna reshape the ditch or do something in the right-of-way. So this permit will be fifty dollars moving forward. And we've got it, any unpermitted right-of-way work will be subject to a thousand-dollar fine, but the, and it will be a charge of additional five hundred dollars per day until these issues are remedied or permitted. So.
You say? Sounds good.
The last one, utility permit. Put the verbiage in there that Andrew requested, plus the ones that you guys asked me to change, and I thought I brought them with me, but I didn't. There's been some discussion as far as what to do with bonds. Right now, we have it for a five thousand dollar maintenance bond per an application. I talked to, well, actually, I sent two guys up a week ago up to Steben County, and they talked to superintendent up there and another employee about we're doing our utility permit. They got, started talking about bonds, and they said that's not anywhere near enough money. They said you need to start out a lot higher. They recommended probably a hundred thousand dollar bond. They had some utilities go through up there that did a lot of damage. They said they're still fighting through that. I'm not aware all of it. They didn't go into details, but I do know a year ago, a year, it might have been two years ago now, the gas company went up Old 27 and did a lot of damage up through there. You know, and it was a short mile, what was it, two miles up through there, and look how much flooding and things they incurred up through there. Five thousand dollars ain't gonna fix that.
No.
Um, we would like to think that contractors, utility companies would work with us and make that stuff right. But it's also, I feel that we gotta look out for the ones that won't, that we gotta protect the county and the residents as best we can. You know, if, if we have a bond that's higher, they're gonna be a lot more apt, we wanna work with you, because if they lose their bond insurance because of negligent work or not being proactive to, um, not cause damages, it'd be hard for them to move forward and get bonded. Um, I also reached out to NDOT on their permits. And they have it set up, they've got a, a language in their permit requirements. The severity amounts for broadband, they specifically have it for broadband. Underground lines, uh, for a performance bond, minimum ten thousand dollars for up to five thousand feet or ten thousand dollars per mile of the total construction cost within NDOT right-of-way, whichever is greater. And overhead lines, they have a minimum of ten thousand dollars up to four thousand feet for the total construction project cost within the NDOT right-of-way, whichever is greater. They also have for a blanket bond, the minimum severity amount for a blanket bond is five hundred thousand. Bond receipts are responsible for increasing the blanket bond value to cover the sum of the cost of their projects subject to an open permit. Then they also have up here under their regular bonds, the current minimum standard amount coverage for performance bond is ten thousand dollars, not including bonds for broadband permits. So I'm kinda wondering if five thousand dollars we're probably light on reading that. I don't know what the, the put on that. I think a minimum ten thousand. You know, I got that one from SurfNet two weeks ago. He didn't bat an eye. He had it that same night, ten thousand dollar bond. He had it sent to me, and, I mean, it wasn't signed, I sent it to Andrew, and it was fine once he signed it, and he signed it the next morning when we had a meeting. And we got that, and Susan's got a copy of that now as well. What's your guys' feelings on that, or Andrew's? I mean, I think. Right.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think raising it makes.
Do they submit the cost of the project to you?
They never have.
I, yeah.
I don't.
And how would you ever know what the bond ought to be?
You'd have to require that information.
On your permit.
But we've never required that in the past.
My thought is, we, after last Monday's meeting at St. Joe, with that mess that's going on, SurfNet, I think that we need, my personal opinion only, is that we need to add language that says they need to have a bond worth what the project is, and then part of the application needs to have that number on there.
Because right now, they submitted, I don't have it in front of me, they submitted a permit that covers somewhere in the neighborhood around thirteen miles of the road. So going forward, if that's submit under one application, the way I read this, that's five thousand dollars. Well, so I think we need to.
That's true, even if you just wanna make it five thousand a mile, it's gonna get you more money than that five thousand for thirteen-mile project.
Right, yeah, 'cause we're talking a lot of.
Makes some sense there even.
We're talking a lot of distance.
Right, a lot of possibility of.
Oh, yeah.
Damage.
Yep.
So even, I was thinking fifty thousand, but maybe that's not even enough.
Not for thirteen miles, probably?
No.
I was meant to do like a percentage based on the, how big the project is. I think that'd be the easiest way to do it. You mean like eighty percent of the project or ninety percent of the project? Something like that, yeah. If it's, if it's just one mile, then it's lesser, and if it's gonna be a thirteen mile, it's more.
For underground lines, minimum ten thousand dollars for up to five thousand feet or ten thousand dollars per mile, fifty-two hundred eighty feet, or the total of construction project cost with. Or the total of construction project cost within the, NDOT right-of-way, whichever is greater.
So they're basically saying if it's thirteen miles, it's.
A hundred and thirty thousand.
Hundred and thirty thousand.
Mm-hmm. That sounds.
Well.
More reasonable, I mean, more safety-wise or.
Well, I was wondering if we would just make our a ten thousand dollar bond requirement to do projects and then ten thousand per mile. I mean, we can put.
Ten thousand for up to a mile and then.
No, ten thousand additional miles. So it'll be ten thousand mile, then ten thousand per an additional mile. And we could.
Even if it's a half a mile, it's still ten thousand. If it's two miles, it's.
Minimum ten thousand, yeah.
But this is gonna be specific to broadband?
I would say underground utilities.
Okay.
Any underground, yeah.
I would be all right with that.
I wouldn't, I mean, they specify theirs to broadband, but.
Could be gas, it could be.
Right, yeah, cause like the, that's what made me think about that up in Steben when they did that, the gas line.
They're doing gas over Noble County or DeKalb along thirty-four, is that gas? Thirty-four, yeah.
Uh, I'd, I'd have to look.
I think they're doing the gas. Anyway, yeah. All you, underground utilities.
Or the, the other thing we could do is start requesting construction project costs. And have the verbiage that they do, and then take whichever is greater.
Do the ten thousand minimum with ten thousand.
Yeah, cause we ain't gonna know whether they're submitting adequate construction cost.
Yeah.
It allows them to, uh, set up their projects based on what they wanna do too. If they just know this is what it's gonna be, they know what it's gonna be. As they add into the cost of the project.
Yeah, let's go by the mile, I think.
So ten thousand minimum and ten thousand per mile?
Yes.
Or any additional mile?
Right.
Anything additional over the first mile.
Over the first mile.
Anything additional counts as the next mile up. You have to have some standard there.
Or part thereof.
Or part thereof, yeah, yeah, any additional part.
Okay. I'll. I'll put that in there and I'll get it to Andrew and we'll make sure we got that language correct. Um, the other thing I thought about, we probably oughta add in here is if a con, or utility does not rectify damages in the right-of-way. Or I'm, I'm referencing the one that we had on camera forty over here, I sent you guys the picture of weeks ago. They went out and dug it and left it. Yeah, we had to go out there and remedy a safety issue. I wonder if we oughta put some language in here of the cost of that.
Well, since that was underground, wouldn't that come under the proposal that?
The bond?
Go after the bond.
The ten thousand bond, dollar bond. I.
I just didn't know if we needed to have language for us to act and make us something safe instead of them having a, an argument where you didn't notify us, give us adequate. I, I'm just asking, I'm just.
We could put a line in there, you could email me with that, a line, if you wanted to, something about the county has the right to any, any safety situation left at the cost of the contractor.
Right.
Yeah, without any.
Cause they did have a permit, I did find the permit. And gotta put together an invoice for them. It was Frontier that did it. But it wasn't filed through Frontier, it was filed through Troyer Group. That's why I didn't find it because I knew it was a Frontier line, but they had, they contracted Troyer to do the work, so we put it in Troyer and I didn't. I didn't see it. So we're also working in-house on a whole new permit tracking. Actually, I got some samples that the girls give me that, where we can track the permits a little bit easier, cause they're hard to track without some type of a software that does a search. You know, it's just, there's no good way of, of, uh, doing that. Okay, um. I think that's it in here. Um, I know you guys, I didn't know if anybody had any other concerns or anything you wanted to see added or changed. The only thing I'm thinking about changing in here under depth chart that says all bores to be forty-eight inches in depth. We also have a line in here, it's not under bores, but says cable must be placed at a minimum of thirty inches in depth. That's in there for anybody that hand digs around the box or does anything. That's always been in there for, it must be a minimum of thirty inches.
Mm-hmm.
Well, in the current situation with SurfNet right now, of course, they're not even at thirty inches, they're nineteen and two foot, nineteen inches and twenty-four inches. But they're throwing that back at me, it says a cable must be a minimum of thirty inches, so they're only going thirty-two to thirty-six.
Why don't you change that language somehow to be minimum of, are you saying when connected to a box, it has to be a minimum thirty inches? What do you mean by that?
I'm just thinking about taking the whole thing out. I don't know how, cause I mean, everybody can argue anything, just cause it says in here, all bores are to be forty-eight inches in depth, and that's why I showed him, I said, you're boring, right? Right, right there, all bores.
Right.
But then it says, yeah, but it says cable must be a minimum of thirty, yes.
Why is that even in there though? I don't get that.
Because if you do any hand work or anything in the right-of-way, if you're not boring, what do you place it at?
Why not forty-eight?
Well, we can, but if you're hand digging, forty-eight inches is hard around the box, but.
It's.
Okay, all right, all right.
It's not easy, especially in our soil conditions.
Why don't you just say for all non-boring, it must be at least thirty?
I was gonna say, except boring.
That would solve that problem then, yeah.
I would hope so.
Well, why don't you at least?
I can, I can.
Email me with that addition.
Let's see here, how'd, how'd you word that?
Uh, it must be thirty inches except for boring, which is forty-eight or something like that. But then all of our digs have to be by boring, I think, part of what our permits will be from now on too.
Yeah, yeah, they're all boring.
Help clarify that a little bit.
We don't, we don't allow plowing or trenching or all bore, yep. Okay.
Is, is anybody doing forty-eight like they should?
There's, they have been, yeah.
Okay, so there are places doing that correctly, there are companies doing it correctly.
Sure, yeah, cause, uh.
I'm just hearing about the ones that aren't. There's other ones that are doing it correctly.
The companies I've talked to that's done the boring here, well, for instance, the one we stopped on twenty-three, he says a lot of municipalities aren't allowing them to plow or trench anymore. That's why he was hesitant to come here and plow. He said, are you sure? He said, most people don't allow this anymore.
Yeah.
But now on the depth, I don't know.
Okay, but, okay. That's good that more places are going in that way because it'll be harder for places to, or companies to argue we're treating them badly or.
Well, the plowing and, and trenching, when they do that, they cut disturb so much, then it settles and washes out and they never go back and fix it right. Also, when you, when you do that, you've got, however depth you're going, if you're going three foot, four foot, you've got a four-foot swath down, however far you're going, that you can hit something.
Mm-hmm.
When you're boring, you've got roughly two to four inch hole.
A lot less likely to hit something on the way.
Right.
Yep, and then if you don't have the, you don't have the ground restoration that you do, you just got the areas where you set your bore machine up and move forward.
And that puts them underneath most everything at forty-eight inches.
It does, yeah.
If there is something, it's, it's gonna be below it, most likely.
Right. Um, is there anything else you guys would like to have incorporated in the utility permit? I think we've got most things covered in here. The fees, we went over. It's, uh, fifty dollars for any work done parallel to the county, the county right-of-way. Seventy-five dollars per bore pushed under road and fifty dollars per five hundred foot bore or pushed parallel to the road. The bonds were changing. Um, twenty-five dollars per five hundred feet on any overhead wires, new poles must have new location state for pre-approval.
I think that covers it. What do we, what do you gentlemen think?
Well, I'm gonna ask for legal advice here. Um, I went to the St. Joe town board meeting last Monday evening, and at the end of the meeting, a couple of citizens asked why SurfNet was working on Sunday and Saturday. And it immediately threw up a red flag because we had already discussed in, in a public meeting here that uh, they didn't put the first line in at the proper depth. And so they were back that weekend putting the second line in, and they put it above the first line. So now we have two bores that are neither one to county specs.
Working on the weekend, there is, might not be people from the county inspecting.
Right, there's nobody inspecting it, so, and that's why it threw up a red flag is, um, and so I contacted Ben, who then went and measured, and yeah, neither one is of course at the depth it needs to be, uh. I, and apparently they were, uh, Spanish speaking and could not speak English with the workers that were there on the weekend, and because apparently a couple of citizens asked what they were doing and, you know, they, there was no answer, they, there was no supervisor online while, while they were working. To me, and this is just my opinion, is is there any way legally that we can get SurfNet to have a supervisor there on any work they do appointed by the county and they pay for it?
Well, um, I don't think you can require that without going through the ordinance process first.
Okay.
Uh, probably. Like, I don't think we could just have a vote here and just require it for SurfNet only. I don't think that would really pass, pass scrutiny, but um, you know, you could, you could say that if someone, uh, or if a company violates the ordinance two different times, you could have a requirement for a supervisor to be on site. And then the question is how do you define supervisor? Because there may have been a supervisor there, just one that did not speak English.
Well, we met with them.
If you know what I mean. I mean, they could designate somebody as supervisor. They could designate, hey, today you are the supervisor, so.
The one that we, we met with him the end of last week, the guy that was from Millennium, they fired him off the job, they said they didn't see him out there enough. There is a gentleman there from Direct Line now that's supposed to stay there and oversee the crews. But there was another guy that's supposed to been there, but he's back and forth to Elkhart. So there is, by their, I was gonna say, their requirement, there's supposed to be one there. I want an English-speaking supervisor at all times, but that hasn't been there at all times.
Right.
Typically close. Um, I've got a contact for all three of them now that we can call and, and check. They are aware of the second time that was put in the wrong location. They now are on the third attempt, and that's why Direct Line is there. Direct Line.
Direct Line is another subcontractor or something that oversees.
They're the ones that's doing the boring, my understanding, that got the money put forth at. And they're, they've been good to work with, they just don't, they're not always there. I do, uh, agree with what Jim's saying, it would be nice if we could put something in our ordinance after X amount of faults. We have the right to totally revoke the permit or revoke the work. Or have, uh, an inspector of our choice be a full-time inspector on, on them, cause I don't know how many times do we go out and slap a hand and still have the same issue. Because the, the one thing that's very discouraging now, I have three sections of conduit down a county road, and we call in for locate, they're gonna.
Which one's real?
Exactly. So we're gonna find one, we're gonna dig around it, we're gonna cut one. Which one's got the fiber in it, which one don't? Now, per the utility regulatory commission, we're supposed to, when we locate a utility, utility, do two feet all the way around that, which we do.
Evacuate two feet like with a water vac evacuation?
Yep, that's why we have our hydro excavator. So when we find the line, we're supposed to do two feet all the way around that to verify.
And we own our own for the count, hydro excavator.
Yep, it's a hundred and some thousand dollar piece of equipment, but, uh, it works great and we use it a lot. Um, but still, it would depend on where that's at, it could put a burdensome on us digging.
Well, or, or any, five years from now, you got three cables, hopefully the third one is at a proper depth. Uh, that's not fair to a contractor to come in and locate the top two and then dig down and actually.
Hit the other one.
Destroy the third one.
Do we have a requirement that the ones that are unused, or the ones that are placed incorrectly, that conduit should be removed?
They don't specify that, but I think we could require, I think we could require them to do it.
I mean, if they messed up and put it in, it sounds like it's a burden on the county to keep it in there. Can you add that to your list of things to?
We could, but I was wondering if we could enforce that now as well.
I mean, if they, it doesn't make common sense to, to leave the old conduit in there. But.
The bad thing is they bored it in and they probably won't be able to pull it back out. It'd probably have to be dug out.
They'll have to dig it out.
Which will, well, that's money, plus it's also creating a dig, which is what we're trying to avoid is a straight dig down because they could rupture other lines when they're digging down to remove it.
That's the chance we will take, yes.
It'd be interesting to know what other counties do with incorrectly bored conduit. Do they just leave it in there for those practical reasons, or do they require it to be removed?
I, I don't know that, Andrew.
You can create other problems when you're digging down to remove.
Oh, yeah, they can hit a lot of tiles and exactly.
But county didn't create this mess, they did.
That is true.
And they need to be responsible for fixing it.
Uh, I'm just saying practically speaking, I mean, if you're comfortable with them potentially.
They could, they potentially could do a lot of damage.
I, I.
That's the bad thing.
They would have to pick, fix that damage.
I would just hope they would fix everything they crossed, that would be a thing, unless one of us is there physically.
Yeah.
There's a concern, I, I'm not saying it's not right to make them do it, I'm just.
Have you had problems with them to begin with? Are they gonna fix them? More problems than they create?
That's what I'm concerned about. I would like.
Is requiring them to pull it out or, or cut it out gonna create more problems? I guess that's just a decision you have to make.
I would like to have it gone because it would be easier going forward, but it was, it's concerning what all they could do while they was doing that.
We make it so that we take it out and we charge them?
Oh, my. We'd have to hire a contractor.
But we know it can get done properly that way, and then they have to bill it, maybe they have to pay for it.
And then it depends on how do you get the money out of them. I mean, if it's this, uh, if it's somebody that's local in-state that you could sue. But if they use some, thought there were some people coming in out of money.
That was a different one. This one here is Direct, uh, Direct Line.
Are they out of Indiana?
Elkhart, I believe.
I mean, we could, we could file suit on them, then you'd have to go collect from it, which we could do. Once we get a judgment, we could do the, uh, attachment process like we did with the.
My concern is, I agree with Ben, the concern that if they're already a bad actor, then we're gonna have them go back through and cut it all out, hope that they're gonna be a good actor during that process is.
Probably won't be.
Yeah, it's just, there's some concern there, to keep using the same bad actor to keep doing work that can cause even more damage to the county and all the other people. So that's my concern.
And I agree with that concern, but I'm also concerned that, you know, five years, fifteen years down the road, somebody starts digging.
Oh, it's.
And, and.
Right.
They're gonna hit, you know, they find the first two, they go two feet around it, and then.
And they go four foot and hit the one.
And hit that one. And hit that one.
Because we, unfortunately, we've been there.
Well, is the county gonna be on the hook? Because, I don't know.
I don't think the county would be on the hook as far as for leaving the other two in there. Hopefully, there'll be a record of all three with the county, so that somebody does 811 or something. Do they, do they look at the county records to see along that road how many people have bored grit already? They just go out and they check?
They just go out and locate the live utilities, because when you go out there and dig, you, there's a possibility you may hit a cable or two that is no longer in service.
Oh, because they're just left in the ground?
Yes, everything's left in the ground.
Um, okay.
Or it may be live, you don't know, when you hit it, then you call, then they'll come out, someone will verify, yeah, that was live, no, that's not, keep going. And that's the concern Jim's got with, especially with that being a fiber. We locate two lines, we think, okay, if one of those are probably it, then we go, then we rip out.
Is it, how hard is it to locate the four-foot line underneath the top two lines that are at two-foot?
Well, you're not, generally, if the locate's there, you're gonna dig down till you find it, and then.
Oh, so it doesn't tell you that it's four foot down or two foot down?
They can, but they will not give you a depth. Legally, they cannot.
They can, but they won't? Because I'm sure whatever's bouncing off, they could say, okay, this looks like it's two foot down.
Because it's not a hundred percent. But utility companies, or relocate companies will not give you a depth.
Know that.
Yeah, I didn't know that either, so if there's several right in a row, you won't know how deep you have to go.
That's why we have a hydro excavator. Because when that ground's hard and stuff, even with a shovel, you take a chance of damaging the wire.
But not with the hydro necessarily?
It's not supposed to, we haven't yet. The water nozzle, it's amazing, it will cut through tree roots, but it won't cut a cable.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's a very long pressure hose, a pressure wand, high-pressure water. And it's got an oscillating nozzle that cuts, and it will cut the ground. We've got a vac that sucks right alongside of it, sucks the mud and dirt right out, and you suck a hole, however deep it can reach.
Okay.
Who's select?
Yep. I don't, I don't, I don't know what to do on that one, guys, I'd personally like to have it all out of there. Am I concerned about future damage with it, doing it? Yeah. But I said utilities is just hard.
I mean, I think legally, you, you can require them to remove it as far as in the future, if you put that in your ordinance, clearly.
I really think we could now.
And maybe now, yeah, if they put it in wrong, they should have to re, return the.
I don't know how you make, yeah, because that's why we stopped them, is, I mean, if you do something wrong, you redo it and make it right.
Right, and redoing it should be taking the old out, not just leaving it in.
In theory, yes.
I mean, you could, if the commissioners want you to do that with them, tell them to take it out.
I think legally, we could, and. I mean, I'm, if you guys want me to, I'm willing to do it. I have no problem with that, I'm just concerned.
You're concerned about how much damage they might do taking it out?
Not all of it has two cables. They'll have one for a long time to remove, a lot of it. Some of it's close to the road, some of it's back. So anything that's close to the road, they'll have to backfill with compactable fill and backfill and action, and. Nice thing is, is that they're only twenty inches deep. So it's not like they're gonna be four foot deep, because if it had been four foot deep, they wouldn't.
They'd be underneath it.
So most generally, the areas they're at, it's probably slim, they'd hit a lot of tiles, only being two foot deep. I mean, they'll, they'll, I'm sure they're gonna cross some.
Yeah.
But.
But I would think they're gonna, they're going to complain about, oh, we didn't put that cable in, why should we have to take it out? If they didn't put the, the inactive cable in years ago.
They put the con, we're talking about the conduit that they just installed wrong.
Yeah, how about the conduit, it's the old conduit?
There's not, none in there, there, this is all.
There's two, two new conduits.
Oh, they're both.
One conduit in badly, they were supposed to put a second conduit in to fix it, and they didn't. So there's two bad conduit, and they're hopefully doing one good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a weird situation.
Take, take them out?
Take them out, do it right, take them out and do it right.
Guys, okay with that?
Yeah, we need.
I would make a, you're the board, so I would, since I brought to the board, I think you need to make a motion to vote on it.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt to have a vote on, on it, I guess.
Yep.
I don't know that you'd have to, but let's, probably just do it.
As another legal question, can we have a hundred thousand dollar bond? Can we create one as part of this, to make sure that they do it right?
I don't know if it's not in your, it depends on what's in your ordinance currently, I suppose.
Look, I do have that. It didn't, that was the thing.
It was as much as is needed, right?
At the applicant shell, at the requirement of the board, execute and deliver the board an indemnity, performance, and completion bond for the utility project as it affects, affects the right of way. Does not specify. So I.
But, yeah.
I take that, if you want to pass that around to Andrew, that's our current.
I remember reading that, I think, and so it gives you the right to do that, subject to the board, which would be, I think, the Board of Commissioners.
Right, but it don't give a specific amount.
So you could, if you believe that a hundred thousand is needed to, to, because of how much of a screw-up this is, then.
Especially if you're gonna make them dig it out.
Yep, you could do that as part of your motion. I think if you want a bigger bond, you gotta do it through a motion and vote, because of the way the ordinance is currently working.
We have the ten thousand dollar bond, Susan has that.
Ten thousand isn't gonna cover.
That's not, that's not much at all, there's no.
But was the ten thousand, the ten thousand bond was required for the third bore, or the?
We required it for that project in general, because they messed up.
Okay. Well, that's what I'm saying, if we've already given them one bond.
Yeah.
Unless they've screwed up again, I don't know that we should.
Well, they put it in wrong again.
Huh?
They put it in wrong again.
They did, after the ten thousand dollar bond?
Yeah, well, it was this week, they was born it short.
Okay, then I'd say because of their screw-up, and because we're requiring them to take it out, and the mess-ups that could happen with that.
Yeah, and they set boxes wrong from when we met. It's right where we stood, and at that meeting at forty, forty-eight and fifty-one, the box wasn't set, and we were just all talking about how it'd make more sense to put it over here. They all agreed, it is now set out by the road where it shouldn't have been.
So maybe raise the bond again, because they messed up again?
I think we could do that as well.
I think we could legitimately do that, yeah.
Yeah, let's go for it.
But it should be in an official motion and vote by.
I, I agree.
The Commissioners. This is the way the, the ordinance is worded.
Right.
Who wants to word this motion?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we have a one hundred thousand dollar bond with SurfNet because of the major issues that have been arisen by not doing bore correctly the second time after the first bond was posted, is that good enough?
Or was it the third time they messed up, or is it just the second?
The second time, the third time they're working, hopefully, it's, so far, it's, looks fine.
But, yeah, to raise the bond because they messed up the second time, and they need to remove it too.
And part of that motion would also be to remove the two cables, or not cables, but.
Undo it?
Undo it.
Undo it, that are placed wrong, and have them totally removed at their expense.
And the ground returned to normal, and done, yep.
It's a long motion.
I don't have Susan.
Almost, just a second.
And Kellen seconds that mouthful?
You got Susan's fingers smoking over there.
Yeah, Kellen second. Okay.
Okay, let me read this.
Read back.
Make a motion to require a hundred thousand dollar bond with SurfNet because of the major issues that have risen by not doing the bore the second time correctly, and also to remove the two conduits that are incorrectly placed with the ground returned to normal, all at the cost of SurfNet.
They're putting incorrectly, can we just put per permit?
Let me.
And do it per permit?
Permit requirement?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Permit, per.
I'm okay with it. Easier to.
Makes it more official document.
Okay.
So I, do I need to amend a motion to?
What's that?
Susan, can you read that back just to make sure? Oh, sorry.
That's right.
To make sure we're on.
See, motion to require a hundred thousand dollar bond with SurfNet due, due to the major issues that have risen by. By not doing the second bore per permit requirements. And also to remove the two conduits that are.
Placing correctly.
Placing correctly. With the ground returned to normal, and all costs. Costs paid by SurfNet.
Maybe you could amend your motion to be what was read, and then you could amend your, or second the amended motion.
So amend my motion, what was read into the record.
Any motion, any second on the floor, additional comments, comments in the public? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Okay. And here again, you know, I hate to be the bad actor, but number one, we need to protect the county in this situation. Number two, hopefully, it sends a message that if you don't want to do the work right.
Don't bet it off.
Don't, yeah, don't, don't come here, we want it done correctly the first time.
That's one reason I'm happy to get these permits done, because we got more teeth in them. Per, there's, there's been several instances that people are not putting the stuff in per their own plan that they submit. And it's not just been broadband, it's been utility companies, I mean, light companies and locals.
The old, the old telephone cables, a lot of those, not where they should be.
Yeah, and it unfortunately requires a lot of babysitting on our side, and, you know, we're, we're trying to work with these people, and all you gotta do is call us, we'll come out, help you, direct you, whatever we can do to help get your project done. It still goes wrong, so it gets pretty discouraging, so.
And I always had no say, and I got my job to do, I don't want to have to do yours too.
Yeah, you're right. Yep.
Okay, so, do we need to accept this initial bond?
I think the Commissioners only needed to acknowledge it.
Acknowledge receipt of it?
Right.
Okay, so, can somebody? I know.
I'll make the motion to accept the acknowledgement, I'm sorry, the acknowledgement of the bond of ten thousand from SurfNet.
Make a motion second on the floor, additional comments, comments in the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, anything else?
Anything else, Ben?
Is there anything else on the utility permits you guys, other than what we discussed, you wanted me to add or amend?
I can't think of anything, how about you? Think we're good.
Yeah, I understand, I will get these updated. Get them back off to Andrew and Susan, and I will send you guys the final as well. And we still have time, so I encourage you to look through them, if you see something, let me know, and then I'll get with Andrew, and we'll.
Okay.
Get it, get amended.
Sounds good.
I think that's enough for the day.
Oh my gosh, yes.
That's all right, we'll get through it, it needs done. Uh, just FYI, next week, not next week, it will be, was that the twenty-fourth meeting? I'll be bringing our annual bids up, go out for bid. So I got my project here for the next two weeks, get those ready, I'll run it past Andrew. That's coming up. We'll have those come out, so.
Enough, anything else?
Sunny Meadows update, Sunny Meadows update?
Sure.
Okay, so we have six residents, one is to be moved out today, he got his apartment on Friday, he was gonna be moving out today. Uh, we have another one that's being moved out date on the twelfth. And then another resident's gonna be possibly transitioned out on Friday. It's on Friday, okay, so we'll have, possibly having three of the six residents being transitioned out this week.
Okay.
So the remaining three, we have one that's, already has an accepted location, just haven't got a confirmation date on it yet. The other one, we're still waiting on some Medicare, what's it called, um, reaffirmation? Yeah, they have to kind of confirm again on her Medicare, and then Medicaid, Medicare.
Medicaid, I think.
Yeah.
Some paperwork needs to be reconfirmed first before they go. That's Brenda's wheelhouse, by the way. Um, and then the third one is going to be the one that we're in the process of evicting. Andrew confirmed with me, her court date's gonna be December eleventh. And then majority of the time for Andrew is that they give him another ten days after that.
That's what they normally do in landlord-tenant situations?
Yeah.
It's up to the judge how much time they, that they get, but they normally give ten days.
So, um, so we're looking like we're gonna be down to possibly just her, starting December first. So I've been asked a lot of times and a lot of questions about staffing out there. I talked to Kyle Pearson, Sunny Meadows Committee also agrees that we're going to have to keep at least two people per shift, so you don't open up liability issues with having one person on one person, especially when the last person's the one that's not.
Trouble.
Happy about it. Um, so staffing will still have to pretty much stay kind of the same. Um, I'm gonna talk to Dale the Matron and kind of figure out how we can move some things around and maybe make it work with just one on. But two people are gonna have to be on shift when they're dealing with the residence. So it's gonna be just one of those things that, for liability issues, I talked to Andrew too, it's just, unfortunately, it's what we're gonna have to do.
Apartment complexes, and that's sort of what we are, we're obviously different than that.
Yeah.
Apartment complexes have to have certain level of security.
Yeah.
Couldn't you do that with local, the local help, that's out there?
We, we have enough staff right now, we just won't be decreasing staff at all until the last resident's probably out at this point.
You have to keep fully staffed until the last resident's out for.
Yeah, just because of the liability issues and everything else that's going on. I know a lot of people have asked how we're gonna, when we're gonna start decreasing staff, we're pretty much at that point at this point, so. Um, and then the, we kind of talked last meeting about what we want to do with the property out there. So I didn't know if we have any more questions about if we're gonna transition it to a green space, or you want me to go out and get some bids for that process, or what you want to do with the building.
I want to see numbers.
Okay, so you want me to, you want me to go out and get some bids on it, that's fine, I can do that. So that's the direction you want me to go on that, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So I will work with, I've kind of worked with Ben a little bit, since he writes the bids a lot for construction and stuff. So in the next two weeks, I'll get you something to look at and see what we want to send out, and then we'll get it sent out and get some bids and stuff like that, so.
I think we need to do that for the public.
Yeah.
You know, if we don't, there's, there's gonna be somebody that's gonna.
No, I, yeah, we'll get some bids.
Has a reason to come back on us, and I don't think we want that, we want.
No, I agree, I just want to make sure that if that's the route we want to go, I don't want to waste anybody's time by asking for bids, and then we go a whole different route, so.
We, we need numbers.
So, and then I'll be going in front of the commite, uh, council on Wednesday. Any questions about Sunny Meadows? Keep you guys updated.
Thank you for your work.
Okay.
Really, really nice job, thank you.
Anything else, Jim?
No, I'm good, thank you. No, I'm good, thanks.
Andrew?
Um.
Okay, wait, before you go, um, did you see this come back for Surveyor?
Did I see it, I think I have reviewed it, uh, when it first, I think it was given to me, I think they emailed me first about it before they sent it to you.
Well, we have two. So this is the one that we originally had that we need. And then this is the one that was the DocuSign that I kept asking for, and that he just sent it today. But I don't know if.
Different than the world pay one?
We should have. Well, we need both, so that blue one supposedly, when they click on the DocuSign. I know, that's why I asked them. So I don't know if we should do this today or not. This has to do with the, um, system for the Surveyor to be able to accept credit card payments.
For the fees.
We, you guys approved the bank account and stuff last week, and this is the, um. The company that will do it, but there's two different agreements that need signed, and I'm not sure if that second one is.
I can't tell if it's the same company or not, so there's a terms and conditions link here. Which it'd be interested to see if it's the same as what I probably already viewed or not, I don't know. ALSgovernment.com, looks like it's a different agreement, so there's, so this, this is a short agreement, but it, there's a link to the actual terms and conditions, which is. Thirty-page document. And we're not gonna be able to change any of those terms, but, still.
So should we wait for two weeks or?
I mean, I can't review it right here in five minutes, no.
Exactly.
Yeah, let's wait.
I mean, I can't.
Yeah.
Let's wait.
Okay, we'll just.
Hold that.
Just act like I didn't say anything.
Two weeks, okay?
Uh, sure, to, to review that, I don't know, I can't.
I'm sending it to you.
Yeah, I can. Download the terms and conditions at some point.
Okay. Anything else?
Okay.
No, I'm good.
Um.
Andrew, yeah.
Right.
I just got an email from Donald Stuckey about the. Wall, or wall bridge. I think just. Maybe. Thought I got something from. Yeah, somebody. Here we go. But I may need more time. Process. Get you guys that information, let's maybe. Put that down.
What's that on?
It is on. The county property, the old, I think it's the old.
The old landfill.
The old landfill, the ingress and.
Unlocked property.
Add it.
Yeah. Yeah, so he sent like a picture of it, where it would be going. How the property would be, yeah, you guys need to look at this and have time to process it, I just got it today, so.
Okay.
I'm sure they'll be fine with us not dealing with it today.
Okay.
I think that was everything.
That was it.
I think.
We are done?
Mm-hmm.
Adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.